The time is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 10th. And I'd like to call this work session to order first on our agenda, our city updates. So Ms. Lano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. There's just a couple of updates tonight before the the presentation of the 2024 proposed budget. And first, I'd like to start with, um, I think we're pulling it up as we speak. A reminder to everyone that it is time for the fall. Community-wide team-up to clean up events. Um, the flyers have been out. There's been a Facebook plan and I am looking for my flyer, which will summarize here. The event is Saturday, September, Saturday, October the 14th from eight to three. Two locations, the Colorado State Fair and CSU Pueblo. The accepted items that that citizens can take and for drop-off. Furniture, mattresses and excess carpet. Um, have yard waste easily accessible in trash bags or boxes. And tires without rims, but a limit of five tires per household. And what they receive, what they'll take away is a Black Hills Energy-sponsored um efficiency weatherization kit. And each um drive-through vehicle at both locations will receive of one of those kits. Um, there's still time to volunteer uh for uh to for assisting at both sites or at either site. And the information on volunteering is at the bottom of the flyer and on Facebook and the website. Uh, please call Haley Sue Robinson, uh, the city's Director of Public Affairs and her telephone number is listed. So that's the first one. It is also then October's cleanup um month in the city. Um, Waste Connections will offer the half-price dump fees this month uh from Monday, October 16th, which is a week from um well, it's next Monday through Tuesday, October the 31st. So there's a good chunk of time there um at the South Side landfill. And the address is 5715 Colorado Highway 78. Uh, truckloads must be covered and the event is open to um City of Pueblo residents only. I'm not certain how they will confirm that, but that's the news from Waste Connections. So that's coming up as well. Um, it's a week following um. Saturday is the citywide team-up to clean up and this half-price dump fee starts the following Monday. Um, we have just a couple of ARPA items on the agenda this evening. There is a resolution for the 25,000 uh for the mural at Mitchell Park. At the last meeting, uh, City Council approved the professional services agreement for the artist. This will approve the use of ARPA funds that also needed to be on record. And second reading tonight, um, it is the $900,000 award to Neighbor Works of Southern Colorado. Um, that team uh from Neighbor Works will attend on Zoom uh to provide a um uh speak in favor of or answer any of council's questions. The ARPA balance report will just uh go over in the presentation of the of the budget. So it's not a separate presentation in the city updates. But that concludes the city updates for the night. Do you have directions or information that I should bring to you next week?
Thank you, Ms. Lano. Questions from Council? Counselor Winter?
Oh, did you turn this on?
Oh.
Um, Laura, we had talked about um speed radar in neighborhoods. And I believe that the majority of council wanted more information on that, um, if that's correct. Um, so is there any way we can move that forward? Make sure it gets moved forward? Do we need to ask council just a nod or do you want more information on that?
I want more information.
Larry doesn't. I know there were some uh comments with folks saying that um the city would make money. But just to make this clear, it um it's it's self-funding. So you basically just break even with this. It's not a, it's not a profit. Um, you basically end up paying the person that goes through and looks at the video and says, yes, this is speeding. Yes, this is speeding. Yes, this is speeding. Um, and that's really all you're, you end up covering. But it does, uh, the, all the complaints I get about uh speeding anyway are in neighborhoods. And you can put them in areas close to parks or golf courses. So um, you know, say like Fourth, that's mostly residential and then you have golf, golf courses. And I actually end up getting flipped off all the time on Fourth Street, Lincoln and Fourth, because I'm driving the speed limit. So that's a real problem area. Um, and I know my block is problem and um I get lots of calls for residential speeding. So if anybody, anybody else, I think, I think we have majority that wants more info on that.
Uh, Madam Chair, then Counselor Winter, um, would you like to schedule a work session with vendors? Is the, would you like the chief to make the presentation?
Well, the chief.
Uh, just an ordinance? Um, how do you want it to proceed?
Well, uh, maybe, uh, the chief had mentioned that they were getting some quotes uh from the company that currently does our red light radar. Um, that we could just add on with that service. So we probably don't, it'd probably be less expensive. And um, probably don't even need an RF, an RFP at that point, if we're just adding on to the current, current service. But um.
We can share the information electronically then with council?
Yeah, he could say, uh, share that electronically and then um maybe put an ordinance forward. Um, of course, Denver was $5,500 per unit. Um, but they have several units, uh, the, the least amount you have, if we only have one or two, it's probably going to be more than 5,500. But we can start with one.
Will do.
Okay.
And then depending on maybe the written communication, we can always schedule it for our work session too, just to ask questions with whoever is going to present. Did you have anything about that, Mayor? Um, Counselor Winter?
Yeah, I think it was pretty clear when um um Chief Noler gave us all the information on it. So uh, I mean, I thought it was clear. I don't think we didn't need another work session. Does anyone else? I think we just mainly need cost and to say, yeah, we want to do that.
We're always going to an ordinance before anybody knows anything about the issue that we're doing.
We had, I was just saying that she.
Let's bring people in, let them give us the information and then we can make a decision instead of uh, I want to do something, here's the ordinance, vote on it. That's not.
I was just, uh, I was just pointing out that Chief Noler had given that information. So if we, if we need more, we can, we can get more.
Give us the information that we can, right now, I don't have any information. Why would I say yes?
Okay, so we will schedule then a work session with the uh appropriate subject matter expertise, folks, um, regarding this, this issue. Counselor Flores, did you have anything for Chief of Staff Solano? One of my questions, Ms. Solano, is about the dump fee um waiver throughout October. Is there any promotional materials that we can help share with that? And also, is it only one time, you can only dump for half off one time throughout October? Or can you go again and again and again?
We'll confirm those rules. I can't imagine how they're going to track by license plate or vehicle just one time. And I believe that the cost is either by the truckload or if you drive across it's by weight. And I'm not confident, confident I could answer that accurately, other than my personal experience is going there. Um, but we'll ask Haley to make sure that it's out on our website and the, and the flyers on our social media pages. And uh, I, I don't, not sure how Waste Connection will be advertising the event, but she's shaking her head, yes, they're likely doing the same thing. We'll get those confirmations out there because it is a week away.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for those updates, Ms. Solano. We're going to move right along on our agenda. Um, and the next presentation is actually regarding ARPA. It's a proposed project from the Pueblo Community Health Center regarding future affordable housing. So can I please have Mr. Moore to the podium? And along with Mr. Moore, we have Mr. Hippolyte, our city attorney and the mayor as well. Anywhere that you think would be best? And whenever you're ready?
Yes. So, good morning, good evening, uh, members of council, uh, George Hippolyte, City Attorney. Um, I'm here today to present uh the proposed expenditure of ARPA funds to purchase a piece of property from the Pueblo Community Health Center that they will be vacating for the cost of them demolishing the property, the current structure that's on the property and giving us the graded land. Um, the city proposes to hold that land um and to potentially put it out to the market uh for bid to see if any developers would be interested in building affordable housing on the land. The cost uh approximately of the demolition and therefore the purchase of the property would be 400,000 or 438,271 dollars. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Wow, that was quick and efficient. Mr. Hippolyte, Mr. Moore, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, am I on? Okay. Um, maybe just a little history. Um, I, council knows that Pueblo Community Health Center developed a a, a new primary care facility on the east side. And um, at the onset of that planning, um, we initiated conversations with Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority. Um, and at that time, they were interested in developing a urban renewal district, which a couple of years later, council uh eventually supported and and now exists. As council, I'm sure knows, uh, urban renewal districts exist to prevent and eliminate uh blight in the community. And so with that um established, uh, our board um knew that at some point in time, we'd be vacating the Park Hill Clinic, which is at uh La Crosse and Fourth Street to transfer into the new building. And uh, our board um certainly did not want to be an entity that was contributing to blight in the community, particularly in an urban renewal district. So um, with me tonight is my colleague, uh, Laura Kelly, she's our Chief Development Officer. And she nurtured some discussions with uh Jerry Pacheco, his, his team, his board. And uh, just, just to keep it condensed and short, um, it, it led to um some, some brainstorming and ideas around the concept of, of, of affordable housing development on the east side. We brought that to the PCHC board. They passed a resolution, I believe it was about a year ago, I think it was October of last year, saying that they would um would be glad to dispose of the property um for that intended purpose. So since last October, we've had conversations with Mr. Pacheco, his board, the mayor, Heather Graham. Uh, Counselor Graham has participated in those discussions. And um, we are at a point in time where we have a, a um um, a vendor under contract to demolish the building. And um, between the, you know, the lead-up and preparation to demolition, including the demolition is the $438,000 figure that um uh, the city attorney um informed you of. So um, it feels like at this point in time, uh, the vision that, that started five years ago is starting to come together logistically. Um, the Jerry Pacheco at Urban Renewal has um even gone so far as to develop some conceptual drawings. I don't believe that he's in conversation with any developers at this time, but um putting, putting a picture to the vision has been initiated. And uh, I think it was late July. And, and others met and, and discussed the proposal that's um before the council at this time. So um, I think I'll just wrap it up there and see if there's any questions. Be respectful of your time.
Well, great. Thank you for that um update and clarity. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores?
I just have one and maybe the mayor can help me on this one. And we, we had plans of uh also moving the fire station. Uh, and uh, is that still a, a plan going forward is uh? Because we're going to have the new station up the road, right?
Yeah, it's our plan to move the fire station, yes, that's. I'm not sure how much separation there is between this building and the fire station, whether there's houses between two houses. Oh, yeah.
So it's not going to uh involve um that station and the demolition that can be done independently of, of messing with the station at this point, because we're not ready, obviously, to remove the station. But that's our plan. And does the plan for urban renewal include going forward at some other time to add on additional housing in that, in that area?
So, so I want to be clear, the contract you will see in the expenditure of ARPA funds does not specifically include urban renewal. The contract will buy, will pay for the purchase and sale of the land from the Pueblo Community Health Center for the city to hold and make available for development. Now, again, if urban renewal brings a plan to the city with a developer, we absolutely can make it available to urban renewal. But at this moment, urban renewal is not a part of this transaction.
Okay, thank you.
Um. So it sounds like it needs to be demolished, which is what the $437,000 from ARPA will be appropriated for. Does it have to be demolished or can it be rehabilitated with the structure?
To invest a significant amount of money into redevelopment, redeveloping it, it could. Um, that, that facility is actually like three different buildings that have been kind of created over time. Um, one of the reasons we didn't rehabilitate the building for our expansion was there's significant foundation problems with the building. And um, um, as I mentioned, our board, um, you know, supports the community's effort to have more affordable housing available. Um, um, and the um it, i- in the, in the renderings and concepts that we've looked at, along with urban renewal, you can create more units by starting with a clean lot than trying to refashion um the existing, the existing building.
And um, given that someone who is a demolitionist is already like on the contract for this project, what's the timeline?
Well, we're, we're in the process of pulling the permits now, shutting off the gas, water, electric. Um, it can, um, we, we were told by the contractor, it could start as early as October 23rd. I think within the next week or two, we'll see fencing going up to secure the property, make it safe.
Great.
And, and the projected timeline for demolition is three to four weeks.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I think that this falls right in line with um our Prop 123 funding. I think that it's, you know, one of the goals to utilize Prop 123 funds is to have X percentage of your um housing market be specifically for affordable housing. So I think that that, that's really going to help us meet our goal. Do we have a unit or, you know, like a, a unit number or a unit target for what the lot, lot size is?
Laura, do you remember what? And these are, these would be single-family workforce style housing. I appreciate uh the city attorney's clarification. These are the concepts that have been being explored at Urban Renewal. Um, but I think, I think, you know, the key is to get a developer in there that can um, bring the houses to market at a price point that would be accessible from an affordable housing standpoint.
I was just going to clarify on the record, I think some of the renderings, w- we've seen a contemplate around 16 units.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Are they rental?
Well, that's going to depend on the developer. They, they, they could be rental units, they could be uh affordable housing to own units. Just, it, it really will depend upon the developer and the economics of the developer. But we are going to designate them and hold them for affordable housing.
Yeah, that's all we need is another 16-unit apartment complex on the east side rental.
Counselor, I just want to clarify, Counselor Tensio, it, it is, the, the renderings we have seen have been individual, single-family homes. That's why we say 16. So it hasn't been 16, uh, a big apartment building, it's been individ- individual, single-family homes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, but I have no idea what anybody's talking about, since it's in my district.
Other questions? Counselor Maestri?
Mr. Moore, um, so you have a permit to demo already? Is one in place?
They're in the process of pulling the permit from the state health department now.
And have you had the abatement testing done?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's been, and it's been, abatement's been accomplished.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Well, seeing no other questions, then for you, Mr. Moore, um, this is a question for either Mr. Hippolyte or for Ms. Solano. When are we going to be seeing this um for first reading?
Well, following the ARPA process, we were waiting for council's consensus to direct staff to move forward with that first reading. So if you can, if you can share that tonight, then, then, then our city attorney will move forward.
Great.
To cra- to craft that uh subrecipient agreement.
Okay, so I'm asking then for council to give direction to staff for um the 437,000 uh demo. That's, that's the projections that we have um before us for the, on the ARPA sheet. Um, Counselor Martinez Ortega, yes. Counselor Graham, Counselor Tensio, I'm a yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Maestri, Counselor Warner. So it's unanimous. So we will see that then, um, Mr. Hippolyte.
Likely on first reading, the 23rd. I just want to make one clarification, we won't be closing on the transaction until the building is actually demolished. So council is aware. So
Right.
We'll bring it to you, get it approved, but we won't actually close the transaction until the building has been demolished and therefore the requirement of the 438,000 dollars needs to be paid.
Yeah, it, so that's what it's, it sounds like the first step is to get it demolished. And you have the first step of the first step, which is council approval to get the ARPA money for the demolition. Thank you, Community Health Center, and thank you for helping the city meet the goal for Prop 123.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Moore. And Ms. Kelly. All right, we're going to move right along. Um, speaking about ARPA funds, this is an ARPA update specifically for the budget work session. Um, so um, I want to point out to councilor's attention that the 2024 proposed budget is before us. Um, in case that needs to be referenced, as well as hand, handed out materials regarding the ARPA fund status. So before me, I see Ms. Romero. So whenever you're ready.
Madam Chair, uh, members of city council, we thought we'd start with the proposed annual budget that we're submitting to you as we, as were required by the city charter to do. Um, submit a proposed budget by the first city council meeting in October. The document that you have at each of your places is that proposed budget from the mayor and from the department directors and from the city staff. Uh, staff has spent an extraordinary amount of time, along with the um, directors, and you'll notice when you review this that this is in a new format than you've seen before. Uh, it's uh in the immunist system, so it's been a little bit of a process to get this done. Um, I want to make a few comments and then I'll turn it over to uh Ms. Romero and Ms. Solano, who have spent innumerable hours discussing this uh with me, with themselves and among the directors and the department heads as we prepare to move forward. But this is a document that represents our values in the City of Pueblo. It focuses on our employees and it focuses on our capital improvements. Uh, we have, once again, in this proposed budget, allocated $10 million for street repairs uh in the City of Pueblo. This is the third year in a row that we've done, that we've allocated $10 million for street repairs. Um, and we're doing that even though we did not have any Tabor excess revenue. Um, but we've nevertheless committed this money. Um, we estimate that um, for the first time since I've been a mayor, we will in 2023 spend more money than we took in. Every other year, we took in more money than we spent every other year. In 2023, based on the projections that we have, we're actually going to spend more money than we took in. Much of that is attributable to the fact that we maintain that $10 million in street repairs, even though we did not have excess table revenues to, to cover that. But we wanted to continue to do those road repairs. So as you look at the budget, you'll, you'll, you'll see that. We need to keep this budget in, proposed budget in a historical perspective. I think we have to look back. Um, we have increased our reserves during the time that I've been the mayor. In 2018, the year before I became the mayor, the audited financial records of the city showed that we ended the year with $25.5 million in reserve in 2018. That's the year before I became mayor. With the adoption of this budget, as we've proposed it, we estimate our reserves at the end of 2024 will be 37.5 million, an increase of $12 million in our reserve from the time I became mayor till now. So I think you have to look at the historical perspective when, when you're looking at the budget. So we have asked uh everybody in the city to um keep an eye, to keep a close watch on their expenditures between now and the end of the year, to make sure that uh we're on top of, of this. And I, I'm confident that they will do that. But I'm going to turn it over now to Alex Romero, our Director of Finance, to take you through the presentation and answer any questions you might have at this early stage. We appreciate that you just got in this massive document today. Uh, and it's, we, we sent you electronic copy last week, but um, you know, it's, it's a significant document. There's a lot of information in it. We have scheduled work sessions and presentations for you over the next 30 days, so that you have an ample opportunity to ask questions, um, make suggestions. Um, if there are changes that need to be made, we can certainly look at those and talk about those. But you'll, you'll have plenty of time. If you want to schedule more time than we've scheduled, I think Alex will talk about the calendar that we've proposed here for members of the city council to review the budget. But if you want to meet every night of the week, that's far, that's fine, as far as, as we're concerned. As long as you have an adequate opportunity to review the budget and satisfy yourself uh with respect to what it contains and um where you'd like to see it go. So, Alex?
Yes, hello and thank you. Uh, so this is the first look at the 2024 proposed budget. And before I get into the slideshow, uh, the mayor did mention that we are using a new program. So we are in Open Gov budget module. So like I said in the email, everything is the same, it just looks a little different. One thing I will point out is that I do know that some of these tables are really tiny to see the details. And that is one thing that we're looking at to hopefully make those larger in the final print version. But if you want to see these and have them larger, this actually is available online as well. So I'm going to give you that address real quickly. So it's at pueblo.us/budgetbook. And when you open that, it shows you all the different pages. You can click on there and then you can see these tables. And so it's a little bit easier to read. So again, it's pueblo.us/budgetbook. And as we work through this, that's going to be the live document that's updated. And then we'll have the final printed version as you receive tonight, um, when we get to that point in the budget process. So first off, key dates, tonight is the first night where we present the budget. And then we have the budget work session this evening. Then we move into the capital improvement plan and that work session next Monday. The formal public hearing is on council meeting, October 23rd. We have the first reading of the proposed 2024 budget on November 13th, with the final second reading on November 27th. We will have work sessions in addition to next Monday's, the CIP one, on Monday, October 23rd, Tuesday, October 24th, so that's typo there, and Monday, November 6th. A little bit of highlights and outlook. So we are looking at doing a sales tax revenue increase of 2% over what the 2023 estimated is at. And that estimation right now is actual through July and then we estimate it out from July through the end of the year. Um, we also had health insurance cost, health insurance cost premium go up 5%, but this still is a lot better now that we have moved to our self-insured health insurance. We had 22.1 million in grant funding in 2023. And then also, as the mayor mentioned, we are still going to be committing $10 million to road repairs. And so our capital improvement total is 12.3 million. Here is the calculation for Tabor this year. We did have a deficit, so what this means is that we won't have to be paying any money back if we weren't debroosed. So um, this is just showing that if, if we were in an area that if we had excess, we would have to give it back. This year, we won't have to give back anything. And really, I would point out, the thing that I saw that made this number different than it has been in the past years, because we have seen excess in the past years, really is that inflation percentage, that 3.541%. That was a large increase and that's what bumped it up to where we actually collected less than we would have been able to under Tabor if we hadn't debroosed. So here is our B1. You'll see from left to right, we have 21 actual 21. You'll see from left to right, we had twenty-one actual, twenty-two actual, then our proposed or projected twenty-three, so that's looking at estimations through the end of the year, and then our twenty-four proposed. I will note down about, uh, three quarters of the way on the twenty-three projected, the increase, decrease in fund balance. When we saw this budget and when it was finalized for twenty twenty-three, we had a decrease in fund balance of sixteen point eight million. We've gone through, and this year, we are looking at having that actually be about six million dollars less and having a decrease of ten point three four million. So that is a savings from where we had budgeted last year. We are looking at having a fund balance at the beginning of twenty twenty-four of forty-seven point eight million. The revenues down below bring us to a hundred and twenty-two million, where you can see the general taxes, that's where the sales tax increase is, is two percent, and then everything else is pretty consistent along the different line items there for their revenue. Looking at the expenditures, in total, very similar, we have a budget of a hundred and thirty-two point five million. Personnel costs have increased and we have also decreased on transfers out to other funds, and that's really on the capital improvement plan and some of those one-time projects that we took care of last year when we did have that larger transfer, where we are using the fund balance from the excess revenue and the larger amount of sales tax we had received in prior years. So that brings us down to a decrease in fund balance in twenty twenty-four as proposed at ten million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand and twenty-three dollars with an ending fund balance of thirty-seven point five million. You will see there towards the bottom, we do have Tabor Emergency Reserve, which is at three percent. And then we have the council designated reserves. So those are in there so that we have at least that amount in our fund balance. But you can really look at the fund balance as that thirty-seven point five. And then what would be available for future spending would be the twenty point six, so that we're always holding at least that thirteen percent in our reserves. Here is graphical representation of the fund balance from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. You can see that it went up significantly in twenty twenty-two after our year in twenty-one, having the increase uh, so much in sales tax revenue. And then we did spend some of that towards a lot of our capital improvement, so it decreasing into twenty-three, and then we're using again another portion for our road repairs in twenty-four, bringing us to that thirty-seven point five million proposed fund balance. Yes, correct.
Is that where the decrease from forty-seven to thirty-seven comes in, and it's ten million for street repairs?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's what you can, when you just look at it plainly, very much so, but it is our capital improvement moving that money over there, and that is ten million. So I would say that that is a very fair assessment of that.
All ten million is out of the city budget? None of it's highway user?
Two point five is highway user.
Seven point five million. So where's that additional two point five when you're saying ten million for roads?
Well, so true, it is seven point five out of the general fund and two point five out of the highway user tax fund. So the two point five, yeah, we'd have to look at the capital improvement plan. So I guess you're right, it is gonna be seven point five of this ten million would be considered for roads, but we have the twelve point three moving into the capital improvement plan.
Counselor Maitre, do you have anything? Continue on.
Okay. This is actual fund balance, and this is showing a breakdown of the revenue and expenditures over the last five years. We have the first four, I'm sorry, last, go ahead, is last five years within the proposed twenty twenty-four. So in the first four line items there, those are actual items from our budget and our, excuse me, our audit. So those are audited financials, our revenue and expenditures, and the changes to the fund balance. And then you'll see the estimated and proposed, and then we have a graph on the side that shows the difference in the fund balance from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. The revenue assumptions that we have used, it's stated that in sales and use tax, we have the actual through July for sales tax and then the budgeted three point three three percent increase for the rest of the year. And our twenty twenty-four budget is two percent increase over our twenty twenty-three estimated amount. Property tax, we did see quite an increase this year, and so that increase was two point four million or thirteen point three percent. And then all of the revenue, we base that on trend analysis and actual collections.
And what, how is sales tax looking for the this year? I know where.
And that is on, we have that, those figures on slide eleven. And so it was better in the beginning part of the year. What we're hoping is there was a little bit of a decrease in June. Hopefully, as we're in July and August, that will pick up, and then as we move into the holiday season, we're hoping that again it picks up. So, um, it has decreased, and that is something that we did take into consideration, and that's why we only did a two percent increase on sales tax, because we do see the economic, um, viability right now within our community, but then we also think that with having growth and other items that is still going to have that two percent increase over next year.
And then Alex, the numbers we received tonight with the percent and change, the three point seven starting in January. I received an email, I think, from the mayor in May, and these, um, percent increases were substantially different, thirteen point four percent, twelve point six percent, fourteen point four. Is that not accurate information?
So we republished those because they were calculating incorrectly on that spreadsheet. It was pulling in another column into that, and it wasn't discovered until I believe it was April is when we noticed that, and so we have reposted those online.
So sales tax was never that high?
Correct. This is the, so the amounts on there were correct. It was just the calculation was pulling in an extra column.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the collections, at least, those were correct, but then as soon as we noticed that that was improperly calculating, we did go through and made that adjustment.
And Alex, just quickly, help me understand the three point three three percent, um, expected average expected, uh, projection. Is that based off of just the average for this year's, the three point three three, or how did you decide that?
So that was actually the amount that was budgeted for the increase for the twenty-three.
Okay, got it.
So we just continued that through the rest of the year. Here is a graph of showing a table for the general sales and use tax in twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two. And then, as you'll see on the next page, twenty twenty-three year-to-date is at forty-eight point three million dollars, and it is at a negative point one. So that's point one, not ten percent. So, um, it is down a little bit from the first seven months of the year. And you'll notice that in twenty twenty-one was that record year where we had an increase of twenty-seven point seven, and that's why we've been spending out of the fund balance some of that money that we collected in twenty twenty-one for some of the road repairs. Now here is the graph that is showing the general sales and use tax collections for the last five years. So it is continuously gone up, but not as significant as that year in twenty twenty-one. Here's the year-to-date sales tax. So we have the first seven months in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three, and then the percentage change between twenty-three and twenty-two. And to the right, we have a bar graph that shows each of those months represented by year. This next slide goes through our lodger's tax. And so our proposed revenue for twenty twenty-four is one point seven one nine million. And we are looking to spend three million fifteen thousand on tourism agencies. And then this, if that, if Val Initiative two A does pass, this is where we would see the revenue increase by that maybe six hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then the proposed expenditure would be out of here as well. So it would have a net effect of zero, but this is where you would see that. And so we have each of those tourism agencies and the amount listed below there.
Can I make a point of clarification really quickly, Alex? The, um, tourism agencies that are all listed there, the Chamber of Commerce, the Zoo, the HARP, they are getting those funds out of the general fund, not necessarily the lodger's tax line, line, is that correct?
So it, the lodger's tax is what funds a portion of them, then the additional amount that is between the three million and the one point seven is general fund. That is correct.
Okay. Counselor Tenzio. Right, so therefore all of these agencies are funded out of the general fund, not necessarily from the lodger's tax. Yes, Counselor Tenzio.
Isn't the Chamber of Commerce separate from all these other agencies? They they don't do the same business. They don't do the same job. Uh, all the others below, Chamber Chamber of Commerce is basically, that nine seventy-five is for them to do tourism recruitment, correct?
And marketing.
And marketing, yes. But these other people don't do that.
They don't do that. They they serve tourists. I mean, they're, they attract tourists to the community, which is why we feel it's appropriate that we count them as part of the tourism tax, if you will. Because they attract tourists of our community.
And I want to point out that the chamber is going to come speak to us regarding this budget request um, October sixteenth.
And this is not the amount they requested. This is the amount my office is recommending.
The next one is our general fund budget by function. And what I wanted to point out on here is that our police in the twenty twenty-four proposed is at twenty-nine percent of total expenditures out of the general fund. Our fire is nineteen percent, so that's a total amount of forty-eight percent for our public safety. And then we have our non-department is just six point five percent. And out of that transfers out, one, twelve point three of that is for the capital improvement plan. So just a little bit different representation of how this is split up so that you can see it by function. And if you didn't like the table, here it is in a pie graph that shows by percentage those functions. And those all add up to that hundred and thirty-two point five million.
That transfers out, is that in the book someplace?
It is, it is page D seventy-eight. It's the last page in the general fund tab. Our next slide here is the general fund debt. And so our only certifica participation that is outstanding right now are the LED streetlights, which our last payment is in twenty twenty-four. If we go through with the COPs for the fire stations, they will be on this page, but, um, that is, the Judicial Center was two point five million. That would have been on this slide in previous years. That's no longer there. So if we do go through with the thirty, up to thirty-seven million dollar COP for the fire stations, it'll be listed here. And this is the information that shows the transfers out. So the column for this left is the twenty twenty-four proposed, and so that goes to the twenty-two point eight million and also is the same information that you would see on page D seventy-eight within your book. And so we show the capital improvement fund, uh, the twelve point three million. Then the debt service that we just saw the breakdown of, and then other items are listed there. Some of these, you know, we might have the the actual amounts less. For instance, Memorial Hall this year has been doing really well, so we have estimated that we will only be subsidizing thirty-eight thousand, where we put it in the budget at three hundred and forty-three for twenty twenty-four, just to be conservative, looking at their past trends, but hopefully they will continue to be successful, and that will be less. Same with our airport. Our airport, we received a lot of, um, COVID funds and different grants, so that's another area that we might not be transferring as much as we have in prior years, but we still want to be conservative and put that in the budget at that one point six million. And we have gone ahead, you can see it's the third from the bottom, the COPs, it says police building, but that is what it was in prior years. That would be the fire stations in the future years. So we have budgeted for that amount. And I'll turn it over to Laura.
Thank you. Will you drive for me? Okay, this is gonna take us outside of the of the general fund budget for a moment, but just just very important with respect to revenue generating that is a result of grants that are run through, of course, the Tyler Munus system and the financials of the city, but they are not part of the general fund information that is in the proposed budget. This is the success through the first nine months of twenty twenty-three on grants that have been secured, and they're listed, uh, by department, the funding amount, and the project purpose. Uh, we probably need to stop going down the list on, um, housing. Um, it would have been appropriate to put list both the home grant and the CDBD grant, which have traditionally been an annual, uh, grant to the city, but wanted to include those, um, in the total of grants received. And then heading down further in the list is Parks and Rec, uh, the Public Food Project, uh, the Police, um, Department, uh, the Public Works Department, and the Transit Department. So secured and, um, processed through ordinances to City Council are twenty-two million and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. That is an incredible amount when you look at the percentage comparison to general fund. It is, uh, this is a way to go, and, um, the capacity with which our departments, um, um, have to, uh, spend, control and spend, it's on all sides and on all departments. The impact and the indirect use of technology and HR and and to City Council, you know, this takes a village uh, for to write a grant, craft a grant, grant, subject matter experts, um, receive a grant, process it, and then execute. It's, uh, this is really something to be proud of. And, um, if I could ask for next slide, when you turn the page, there's, we, uh, for the first time are presenting this information only because it continues to grow. And, um, this is a pie diagram of what has been secured in the city through the first nine months is the twenty-two million um, in progress. So the in-progress grants have another twenty-one million. A a NOFO is the Notice of Federal Awards or Notice of Federal Opportunity. Um, this has been released, the mayor has approved the application submission, and the application is in progress, but that amount of grant has not yet been, um, submitted. So another twenty-one million on top of, uh, the twenty-two secured. But the next amount is even more incredible, and that is pending. An application is complete. It has been submitted to the funder and is consideration by the multiple different agencies that the city has applied to. Pending is seventy-six million, three hundred and fifty-one, uh, thousand, uh, two hundred and eight dollars. So that's another incredible work that the, uh, that the village has participated in, um, submitting. Um, declined, when you look at the overall numbers, this speaks to, again, the quality of the grant submissions. We have been, we received notice that the grants submitted of and have been declined of nine point six million. Um, boy, it's a sad day when we get those emails too with notification that, um, the grants have been declined for whatever reason. There is usually a follow-up meeting uh, with the grant, uh, uh, our grant writer and also our department director, who is the, uh, the key individual to submit these grants. But only, only, I should say, only decline of nine point six million. And then bigger still, forty-five million dollars of forecasted grants that have been announced by a funder, but they have not, um, released the NOFO yet, and our grant writer is on top of looking into the future. Um, I know that in PayCog, uh, PayCog hired a, uh, grant, um, search engine, I guess, um, a a wonderful woman um, who lives out of of Phoenix and, um, has asked the mayor and and, um, and Luanne if they will attend the next, um, PayCog meeting so that she can talk about. so that she can talk about her process for, uh, searching and forecasting, uh, future grant opportunities. But another forty-five million that with no NOFO release that she's watching on a regular basis and that, that grows regularly. Um, so we had to insert that information because that's an incredible resource for, you know, about first for the position. Well, the grant writer position is half-funded by general fund and really half-funded by transit. The Transit Department as they track, uh, you know, it's, it's difficult to track all of the, the funds that come directly to the Transit Department. Um, and then this, I'd take us back now into the budget moving forward and we likely, City Council will likely ask for a separate presentation from the Public Works Department with respect to roads completion in twenty twenty-three and the plan for twenty twenty-four. But since they were ready to roll with the information, we included it in the slide deck this evening. Uh, completed in twenty twenty-three and or in progress. There are the arterials and the collectors on the left-hand side, which is thirteen different areas throughout the city. And you can see noted in red those that are still in progress. And the residential streets, you can see where six of them have been initiated and the last three are still in progress due to be completed, um, if not before the end of the year, carried forward into twenty twenty-four. And next slide, please, thank you. And separate from, um, the road repairs, the concrete repair and the maintenance. And on the left-hand side, there's the listing of eight of the arterials and the collectors with the last three in progress. Prairie should be completed, I, I hear soon. I'm supposed to stop with soon as I'm not certain how soon, but it's, it's like a capital S, I believe, soon. Very soon, he adds, very to the soon. So that's, that's very good news. And the residential streets on the right, there are twelve listed, so great work out of the, uh, the Public Works Department on, on, uh, the roads and concrete repair. You see the last eight on the, the right are still in progress to be completed by the end of the year or into, into, to next year. Concrete repair isn't quite the same as asphalt season, when they talk about asphalt season, concrete repair can go into weather permitting into the following, uh, into the winter months. You do see though, on the right-hand column where there's CDBG, CDBG, CDBG. As Brian presented his CDBG plan, uh, there's an annual four hundred thousand dollars that are dedicated to, uh, a curb and gutter. And these are some of those projects that are in progress with those resources. So, uh, nice work with respect to, uh, the listing there. And next slide. It wasn't enough that Public Works had presented the streets but wanted to reconcile to the budget. And, um, so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm proud that they were able to present, um, the reconciliation of both, both the general fund and the HUTF in the coming couple of slides. But out of the twenty twenty-three, uh, budget approval, there was seven point five million dollars. You have awarded through all of the ordinances to date, uh, six million, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars with another five hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. Because these are capital improvements, that, those resources are not lost at the end of the year, they'll continue to be added to the capital budget for Rose into twenty twenty-four. But the listing for reconciliation is by project number on the left-hand side that ties back to the, um, Tyler Munus accounting system. The estimates and the, and the resolutions that are applicable are included. And in the right-hand column, it will be, uh, the, the contractor who were awarded the different contracts for those particular projects. So, uh, another, a nice reference to the transparency of where the seven point five million dollars has been spent to date and the amount still to carry forward into the next year. And the next slide, because they are a little bit of an overachiever here, um, this is the, the pie chart version of the previous page on, uh, the general fund street rehabilitation allocation, uh, by area of improvement. Kaleidoscope there. Yeah, the next slide is the reconciliation of the HUTF street rehabilitation. You probably had a looked at it quickly, but my first look was where's Prairie on the previous page? I, that is, that's, that's the truth. In a planning meeting probably last week or today, we all went to where is Prairie? Well, here is Prairie. Prairie was funded by the, the HUTF is the Highway User Tax Fee and Fund, and the twenty twenty-three, uh, budgeted amount was two point five million dollars. And the reconciliation, um, below is for the asphalt improvement on Prairie of one point two five million, the asphalt improvement on South Prairie, Faribault to Prairie Hawk, a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. The curb and gutter repair along Solar and Bay Crest on, uh, the southwest side, uh, following the Public Boulevard South. Seven, um, thousand and fifty, five hundred and one dollars. And, uh, still to carry forward in an uncommitted balance, uh, is one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand of the twenty twenty-three HUTF of funds and award. The question likely is, um, we, we, is it a capacity that these were not spent? And I'll leave that to Andrew to present, uh, following week, but that's my sense is that we, we have a capacity of, of being able to accomplish several projects, but we still have, we don't lose those resources, we carry them forward. And then Alex will, will address in the budget how much HUTF resources have been estimated through, from, received from Denver, uh, that we will, but is included in the twenty twenty-four HUTF balance. Um, so that, um, is a, a combination of both the general fund and the HUTF balance going into twenty twenty-four is an additional one million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-three, which is on top of the ten million dollars that is included in the two thousand and twenty-four, um, budget. There's the recap and, and lastly, she already switched slides here. This is pretty impressive when you look at the, the miles of street overlay from twenty, from two thousand and two to two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the numbers say one thing, but the graph is, is pretty amazing on the right-hand side. I, I did the math and I added up the lane miles, the lane miles is more, when there's more than one street, one more, more than one, I guess directional travel, and that is one hundred and six, uh, point three five lane miles just since two thousand and eighteen. And the graph shows the indication of the, of the really, uh, good work in, um, overlaying, um, lane miles in the city. The orange line is, um, miles and then the blue line is lane miles. And then we have to ask Andrew, what's your plan for twenty twenty-four? Because there is a budget of ten million going into the next year. And he provided on the next slide here, uh, ten, um, arterial and collectors to be, um, have to receive the asphalt repair and maintenance. Uh, they're listed in, in no particular order in this unless he's able to share if they were in priority order or January and through the year of twenty twenty-four, but I did not find a particular order, but he's also listed the funding there for the assistance from CDOT in the Eagle Ridge and the Dillon Roundabout. The residential streets, there's another CDOT-funded roundabout at the corner of Jackson and Adams and again at Berkeley and Mesa. And he's, he's already presented before the, um, uh, I think the, the, the safety measures that a roundabout will, um, provide. I like everyone else, I have to, to wait to see, we all have a different, uh, traffic pattern when we drive on roundabouts, but, um, additional information and, and we're going to take a list, I think Alex and I, of what you'd like to hear more in depth in the next several weeks. And if, um, Public Works is, is on that list, um, he'll be back with this information and plus any additional that you'd like regarding, um, the, um, uh, street, um, overlay, uh, for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Uh, we're not ready quite for questions unless you want to stop here and then go back to ARPA. Or if you want me to continue and we'll look at the ARPA, uh, status of the funds that I distributed to you before the meeting.
Any questions regarding the budget? Counselor Flores.
I was interested in, in all the money that, uh, you're showing here with grants. And I'm assuming that the only item that you recognize as revenue are those grants that have been approved? And, uh, because a lot of that other stuff is pending.
Yes, yeah, Counselor Flores, um, the twenty-two million you approved through ordinance. There's one side of the accounting structure to bring the grant budget and appropriate it. And then there is in the accounting department, a, a grant finance accountant who actually then expenses all of those grant, uh, uh, resources. Either as a drawdown or as the grant comes in in full and then we spend them out, but complies with all of the grant requirements for reporting regularly. All of that happens, um, um, not in, it happens in Tyler Munus, but it does not happen in the general fund.
Okay.
So the resources go through our Tyler Munus accounting system. The expenditures go through Tyler Munus accounting system, they are just in a separate fund that is accounted for in the accounting office, in the finance office.
Good, thank you.
And we spend the grant to zero. Every grant has its budget and we allocate it accordingly and spend accordingly and report on it accordingly throughout the two-year grant period or eighteen-month grant period, whatever that happens to be.
It's, it's incredible what our grant writer is doing. I'd, I'd like to know when we're gonna build a monument, uh, outside Memorial Hall for, or do something.
Well, there was not a grant writer position in two thousand and nineteen, uh, when, uh, when, when, I think I sat with the mayor for the first time and when we, when you looked at positions that were necessary that first year, you council approved that grant writer the first year, but not with some full funding out of the general fund. So we, we haven't moved that funding at all, fifty percent is funded by transit and fifty percent by the general fund.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Graham.
Laura, in the, um, staffing detail for the internal auditor, have we not had any success bringing somebody on or what's the deal with that? The Grant Coordinator and Financial Empowerment, what is that? And the Just Transition and Food Project, are those gonna be paid solely with grant dollars? And why is that in the budget?
Yes, yes, and yes. Okay, so the first one you asked about was the, the internal auditor. And, um, and we will probably bring next Monday or the following Monday, um, HR, so Marissa Pacheco will present all of the, of the, um, the hiring, um, that goes along with this budget. But the first one for the auditor, there's just not space, and so we waited throughout the year to determine where we, we were gonna set, uh, an internal audit. Uh, the job description is written and ready to roll out and hire, um, but it was funded last year, you approved that position in the, for the twenty twenty-three budget. It is sat vacant, uh, for this year with an intent to fill. Uh, the Grant Writer Position. The, the Financial Empowerment Coordinator, when Marissa presents the new positions going forward into twenty twenty-four, that is one that, uh, we are asking for a full-time position, it was funded by part-time dollars this year and we've opened up soft launch, I, I saw, soft launch of the Financial Empowerment Centers, um, in the city, uh, last week for a full, uh, press release and ribbon cutting to come in the next couple of weeks. There is enough work for a full-time position and have allocated for it. We've also applied for it for a grant, uh, for the full-time position that will cover two years of that salary. But if we don't budget for it at the time, we ask City Council to approve a budget, then it doesn't reside in its staffing pattern. And there's, the resources are not allocated, so it is included as a new position in twenty twenty-four. Uh, the Just Transitions Position, you did approve in twenty twenty-three, it's, it was vacant at the moment. A hiring vacancy process is underway. Uh, Mayor offered a position a week ago and it was declined, so we roll it back out with a re-announcement. It's paid for by grant, but again, it has to be included in, in the, uh, the staffing pattern. And, uh, you have to budget and appropriate the ability to, to include it in payroll.
Even though it's being paid with a grant?
Yes, that's, the accounting department accounts for the appropriate funding source when they pay it out of payroll.
And then what about the Food Project Coordinator is, uh, the same?
Uh, the Food Project Coordinator, we're in process and meet later this week for additional conversation about exiting the food project from the city and the timing, but if, if it, if, if it does not occur by January, we have to roll that position into the twenty twenty-four staffing pattern and budget, and again, it is a hundred percent grant funded. We do have the resources, um, built in, in the twenty twenty-four budget in the event that it does exit the city. Uh, the county has supported the Public Food Project by forty thousand dollars for the last several years and the request on the non-departmental is at forty thousand also. We, we will know more as we go through the budget process in the next eight weeks.
And when's the staff? When is Ms. Pacheco coming?
Well, she can come next Monday, she's here tonight, but she can have a presentation on the sixteenth because we just had a cancellation from the school district for the sixteenth or Monday, the twenty-third, whatever is your preference, and in whatever order you want to hear from departments.
Okay, thank you.
Can we do the sixteenth, Ms. Pacheco? Great, Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, the Just Transitions, uh, Coordinator, how long is that position for?
It's a two-year grant, um, and the state has said they'd extend it since we didn't have, we didn't expend the first, the two years, isn't that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to ARPA.
In the Internal ARPA, um, Committee Meeting, we, uh, would like to present a full, uh, budget presentation, but probably wait till the beginning of the year because we have many of these projects whose, um, sub-recipient agreement sunsets at the end of the year, so we have to wait for that final year-end report. But what you have in front of you is the status as of nine thirty. The first stop on the page one is the incredible amount of interest that the ARPA funds have earned this year. That total is one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents in interest since we received the ARPA funds in twenty twenty-one, uh, through the September twenty twenty-three, um, interest statement. And then there were the other, uh, listing going down that, uh, status report. The left-hand column is the authority, uh, that City Council, uh, utilized to approve the use of ARPA funds since its inception. Um, that's easily then, uh, traceable when the citizens or anyone else would like to see the, the background in history. And, uh, then the, 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 the listing of the expenditures as they occurred. It's not in alphabetical order, it's really as they occurred. Um, on page two, there's the Approved City Proposals. Um, and if you stop at the bottom of page two, City Council President Graham asked for, uh, the remaining balance of the Small Business Relief Grants, uh, to the one hundred and seventy-one businesses. Council approved two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred. And, um, Alex and our ARPA, um, accountant confirmed that at the end of September, the balance remaining, uh, that will be available to, um, to reauthorize is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. So the time period had come and gone for small businesses to apply, uh, for those resources, so that will be added to the available balance for, um, for, I think, re, re, reallocating. Which there may be others, you know, in that listing. And on page number three, uh, then leaves the balance, um, three-fourths of the way down the page with ARPA funds remaining. The Council's actions to date of three million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it would be prudent here to add the pending projects that you'll consider this evening and that you gave direction to this evening, which is another three point two, three, seven, a million. Except I think when you look at the four thirty-seven that you, uh, gave direction on this evening, it is included there. And that does take the ARPA fund balance a remaining of nine thirty to five hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, as a reminder, the, the expenditures must be encumbered by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Full expenditures by, uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Alex and I still have to go back to look at how we estimate payroll through twenty twenty-six. We haven't figured that out, we'll be back. And the second handout is, um, regarding ARPA is the Lost Revenue or Revenue Replacement, ten million. Again, it shows the amount, amount and a decreased balance of what, what the council has approved, including the resolution and the department and the amount. The department directors will be providing information as to the status by the end of the year. In the event, uh, the federal government calls it clawback. When you've ever, when they award grants and then they're not spent, they clawback the money. We, we're trying to use the word reauthorize, clawback sounds a little bit tough. But as you go through that listing and to the last page there, officially at September the thirtieth year end, um, or September thirtieth end, there's four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three remaining in the lost revenue amount, but there are, uh, three, uh, pending um, opportunities that have not been brought forward to City Council yet. Uh, the fifty thousand dollars for the Financial Empowerment Center, hoping not to need that since we've applied for a grant from the state and hopefully receive awards for that. The hundred thousand dollars for Parks and Rec Three Trucks, hoping not to need that as we've applied for a grant for those, um, electric vehicles. And, um, the PD Internal Survey of Satisfaction with a Leadership, um, it's a, it's a professional services contract. Not yet certain about that seventy-five thousand either, we will have to determine the source of those resources, but it sits here as pending, which would take, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand pending, that takes the balance down to, uh, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents until and unless we do some reauthorizations or some return of some resources that we know department directors are, are not going to spend. That, now that concludes the ARPA update as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lano. And I guess talking about salary projections through the end of the ARPA tenure, I didn't see the ARPA Coordinator position on the, as part of the mayor's office budget.
The ARPA Coordinator isn't funded by general fund, and so you And so you authorize the funding for the grant out of the ARPA allocation. So she it's not, she's not listed there.
But didn't we just say that even if it's covered by a grant, it still needs to be within the budget?
It's in the budget with respect to the ARPA budget when you pass that overall budget. So correct reporting would be, she's only been part-time. So the staffing patterns that you see are are only of full-time positions to date. She's not been a full-time accountant.
And that's why it's not included in the budget, not that it's grant-funded.
Not that it's grant-funded, she's only been part-time, it will remain part-time going into the the next year as we figure out what council approves with respect to the FEC full-time position and what the resources we need for a part-time of ARPA Coordinator on the front side. For the most part, there's less and less work on the front side to communicate ARPA funds, with a majority of the work now then lies in the accounting office on the accounting side of ARPA.
So I'll just clarify on the, you'll see that position on the mayor's staffing detail, that's the one that's the Grant Coordinator slash Financial Empowerment. And the Financial Empowerment is the piece that brings it to the full-time, so it was part-time for the Grant Coordinator, which was the ARPA. And then the other position is actually a finance position. And she is listed as a tax auditor two. And so she isn't in that position, she's doing the ARPA, but it's the same pace, so that's how it's listed within the budget.
So what I'm hearing then, Ms. Romero, is that the Grant Coordinator position is actually the part-time ARPA Coordinator position, so so she's just helping with art, but not necessarily all grants. Okay.
Yeah, but then as Ms. Alana said, as we get closer towards the end of ARPA, she could be helping with other grants, so rather than having it be an ARPA Grant Coordinator, it's listed as Grant Coordinator.
Other questions? Counselor Maestri?
So that you you have that, those part-time wages dedicated to those line items. What is the, what is the temporary part-time wages for 46,500? What's the plan for those?
For the mayor's department, is that what you're looking at? Let me write that down because I'll have to actually look it up to see the detail on there unless my bona fide Bree or Anna can look that up. Part-time temporary wages for the mayor.
I I submitted the budget finance, so before Anna steps in, there is the the part-time energy coordinator. That's that we filled that position this last year. And then dependent on the City Council's approval for the FEC Coordinator, we, as part of that grant, we need to provide services. So if you don't approve the the full-time, there'll be a requirement for continuation at part-time.
There are a couple of pending ARPA projects that I have questions about. For the public, so there was a million dollars in ARPA allocated to public safety that's unallocated. What can you help me understand what that's for?
We'd originally put 2.5 million dollars there in of ARPA funds that we're going to hold, we're going to pay a recruitment bonus to new police officers, so we set aside 2.5 million dollars to pay them $50,000 each. That didn't work out, we left that allocation there. 1.5 million of that we're putting into the Real-Time Crime Center. The other 1 point million dollars is there for public safety as well, we're holding it there. Might be to pay for the subscription for software the first year, we're still working through some of those details.
Okay. When it is worked through, can we have a work session about it?
Sure.
For the, there's $500,000 allocated to purchasing the Span Elementary property. I know that we talked about that several months ago now, maybe even a year ago. And I think I remember the city no longer being interested in purchasing that building, but it's still allocated here. Can you help me understand why it's still allocated?
So I think, Counselor Martinez, currently the city is exploring with Rocky Mountain Sir, an opportunity for Rocky Mountain Sir to purchase and build affordable housing units on that specific property and use ARPA funds to do some of that process. However, there are some other complications that have occurred during negotiations for that process. And so that agreement hasn't been brought forth to council.
Essentially, we were going to use that money to help them demolish that building.
Yes.
And they would agree if we use that money to help them demolish the building, they'd hold that property for affordable housing or use it for affordable housing. So that's what we're working through with Rocky Mountain Sir.
The nature of the deal is if they weren't able to build affordable housing at some time, the property would automatically revert back to the city and be available for develop for for affordable housing, but there's some other issues that I've been working with their council to work through, and as soon as that process is done or we have a plan forward, we'll bring that agreement to council.
Sure, I just know that, I mean, that's been now like a year-long process and I know that we agreed to do that, we didn't agree to do that, we agreed, so it's I'm just confused about why it was appropriated. Counselor Maestri?
Didn't you send us a a a proposal from the demo contractor earlier in the year? What, didn't you send out a proposal from the demo contractor earlier in the year to our emails?
I do not believe I have.
Well, you didn't, the mayor. Yeah, because I remember us receiving a proposal for a demo contractor. I remember receiving a proposal from a demo contractor and what I noticed was a price on it. And I thought it was 750,000 and it said this was the cost that and it didn't include an abatement. And I know that some of these buildings can end up costing us two to three times more to demo them depending on the abatement reports. So, you know, if you allocated that bunch money without having even done an abatement on it, that's not a fair, you know, we need to know what that's going to be because it could exceed the amount that you have here by two to three times amount. That's why I always ask about abatement and demolition.
Did you have anything?
Well, I would just say are, again, are the current agreement contemplates an award of funds. And if the funds are not used and affordable housing is not built in a specific time, the property reverts to the city. So regardless, I would say this, the way the deal is currently constructed of how much money it costs to abate and actually demolish the building. If the affordable housing is not built within a certain period of time, certain period of time, the property reverts back to the city and can be made available to other other developers. So in this particular, the context of this particular deal, if the cost overrun what's allocated by the city, that actually might work to the benefit of the city in making that property available for affordable housing.
It depends on if it's costing the city through time the amount.
So so I guess what I'm saying is if if Rocky Mountain Sir is not, would not be able to deliver under the current terms of the subrecipient agreement, if they were not able to deliver the affordable housing in a certain period of time, regardless of how much it costs to demolish and abate the property, the property automatically becomes the city's.
And it could be our problem regardless.
Sure, but at that point, we'd be able to go back out to the market and get a private developer to to build affordable housing there at their cost.
Counselor Tencio?
What is that timeframe for them to build that housing?
We currently have it at 36, in in the agreement, we currently have it at 36 months. It is not, you know, the agreement is not finalized, we're still working through some other details, but currently it would be 36 months from the from the date that the contract is signed.
And then my last question is the Your Neighborhood, Your Voice project for the million dollars. Was that coming out of ARPA? And if not, where was that in the city budget?
That is in the capital improvement plan, so that's part of the 12.3 million.
But that's a fact, that's factored into this current budget, even though we haven't voted on it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, because then depending on if you approve the budget, then it will be part of the budget and budget and appropriated at that amount.
Okay.
As it sits right now in the proposed.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, that is the last agenda item for the work session. So I will conclude this work session.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, Ms. Lano.
Can can Alex and I ask one question? To be to be able to keep us prepared from department directors and from finance and from the mayor's office. We know that on 10/16, we are coming prepared to present the capital improvement plan in full and Marissa will prepare and present the HR staffing plan. But but then we have the following 23rd and 24th, so we're we're hoping that as council has the opportunity to go through the budget. And I've already talked to Counselor Flores, I know there's a couple of items he wants to make sure we we add as addition. And as you hear from the chamber and others, I think if you just send Alex or me or both, either a phone call or an email as in advance, we can have, we can please ask the department directors to be prepared and schedule them so it fits on in in that timeframe. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you for that note. I am then going to conclude the work session at 6:51 PM. And we're going to take a brief 10-minute recess before starting the regular meeting around 7:00 PM.